Would you all stand please as we honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance? Flags and back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. First of all, our business is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board on an item on the agenda?
Just that last.
And Ray, just have to state your name, please.
Go through the routine. I'm Ray Hardy from Brandy Street in Bolton. The handout that I gave you initially addresses the natural gas number HC. That's just a fact sheet put out by the Sierra Club. It actually was in response to the proposed Algonquin Pipeline Expansion, which the extension would feed off of eventually if that went through. That was it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
If no other comments, move on to item three. We have a number of minutes to go through, but first one is approval of the minutes of May 3rd, which was our regular meeting. So move. Second.
I'll second.
Comments, additions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries. Item 3B is minutes of the special meeting held on May 10th. Someone move those, please?
I'll move. Second.
Additions, corrections, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of May 10th as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries. Item 3C, approval of the special meeting held on May 19th. Someone move those?
I'll move.
In seconded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's easier to record that way. And comments, questions, any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of May 19th as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries unanimously. Item 3D is approval of the minutes of May 24th. Again, special meeting.
So move. Second.
Comments, additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting those minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Passed unanimously. And getting down there, motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on May 26th.
So move. Second.
Comments, additions, corrections?
Yes.
Yep.
Number two, the first sentence reads, "Discussion was held on the acceptance by the town of Bolton of the deed for the properties taken by the state DOT for the expressway properties from Knatch Road to Knatch Road Extension." I think instead of that two-word phrase, "expressway properties," I think it would be clearer if we said "for highway purposes," which mirrors the deed that we are getting from DOT?
Maker of the maker, in second, okay with that?
No.
Okay.
So just taking out the...
Yep. Do you have that?
Do you have DOT for highway purposes from Knatch Road?
Yep. Right.
Okay. So, motion before us is not to approve the minutes as amended. Please, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries. And item 3F, approval of the special meeting held on, minutes of the special meeting held on May 31st.
So move.
And second. Comments, additions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries. Correspondence? You have the, is that the letter from...
Well, that's actually under...
Oh, it's under new business, though. Okay, other than that, then we don't.
She's six weeks old.
I'm gonna go right down to new business. Charter Oak Greenway, I'm sorry?
Nothing under correspondence?
No. On to items six. A, Charter Oak Greenway Shared Use Path and Extension. Last week, we, DOT, Joyce and I and the owners of the Drive-In Theater meet because they wanted to modify again the entryway that they originally had proposed. And to...
Excuse me, Bob. Who? Wanted to modify DOT or the owners?
DOT.
Okay, thank you.
It was DOT.
But the owners of what?
The drive-in property.
Drive-in property, known as the drive-in property. So, and it, the intent was to address a concern that the owners had, that the driveway itself came very close to that high sandbank, and it would be expensive because they'd have to build a wall. So, they shifted it so that you would come in and then basically turn away from the bank and head towards the back. It was a sketch, and their, in their proposal that they made, they lost a few parking areas, but what they're recommending is that the owners would replace those towards the front. You may notice that the state is, if you go by there, they're actually using that as a fill area. That's effectively the area. And so when we were there, we got, Joyce and I brought up the issues of sewer easement and, because we brought up the gas line, potential gas line easement and utility easement to the site. Would they run them down the road, or would they still allow them to go through right alongside of the commuter parking area? As you know, the Greenway, the Bridgeway comes down around, and that's still the same design as we all approved and looked at, no change there. But in the discussions, everyone felt that there's enough non-paved area for the utilities to go through there, that they would consider allowing that area for a utility easements to feed the theater property. Most of this is theater property issues. And then, of course, we talked about our access, and our access would be over that roadway, the new roadway, has it been planned before? And then it would pick up very near where the roadway currently exists, but at the rear part of the parking lot, very, very close to what they had before. We don't have that as a plan because this was a preliminary, so now they're gonna tweak it. We did get into a discussion, and somebody brought it up, because the state, what they had planned to do was to, in exchange for that front piece of property, is grant the owners of the theater, the right-of-way to put the road in, and also the town and deep access over that road. Well, all of a sudden, somebody realized, wait a minute, that's the only frontage that they have. They would not be able to do their development. So I suggested, I says, why don't you just grant easement, exchange easement rights? They actually agreed to it. I mean, they had everybody there that could actually agree. So what is being proposed is that whatever, all the rights, all their rights to perpetuity will go to the state, the Drive-In Theater guys, and the state will grant the theater the right to access their property, the town of Bolton access that roadway, and EEP to access. So, but we haven't seen that yet, but that's what we're looking at.
Now, I thought that the plan allowed, gave an access way to, on the west side of the commuter lot.
It does.
It does.
It does, it enters the same way. Before, if this is the...
But they wouldn't own that, the way it was proposed. Oh, that would just be...
Yeah. So now, instead of going this way and here, yeah, they now have a right-of-way that goes through there, and basically like this, here's the commuter parking lot. It cuts off maybe eight parking, eight or 10 parking...
What they're doing is, the old road went kinda cut in and went behind where the current parking lot is.
Yeah.
The new one cuts off the end of the current parking lot, but moves parking, expanding it out towards the front.
So there's no loss of parking area. Our access remains essentially the same at the far, at the, what would be the north end of the parking lot, close to where the bike trail enters the commuter parking lot. That's at the northeast corner. That's, those plans weren't there, but they indicated that there was no change on that. But as we were leaving, I asked, because I was quite frankly concerned about the movement of money, you know, I asked about that, and the representative from DOT said that those funds are actually pretty safe, because they have determined that as a high priority because of the connectivity to it. If it wasn't connected to anything, we probably would not see it happen, but they say they're... So, I kinda held back on that till after the budget got passed, and, you know, and we haven't heard anything otherwise from them at this point. So I guess it looks like it's still go, they say they're right on schedule. And because of that, they're looking to finally finalize this, because this is a key element, because they have to, you know, for the Bridgeway and all that.
Was it Will Britnell who met with you?
No.
No, it was Marissa.
No, this was, yeah, this wasn't the trails person. It wasn't, we got this second-hand, it really wasn't the...
It was Marissa Washburne who was there at the meeting?
Yeah, she was the one that was dealing with the Drive-In Theater property, so. And that was, that was sort of a surprise at the end, where she just, because I asked the question, you know, about where is this?
You talking about the money for the trail being safe?
Yeah.
I thought that was in the paper as a bunch.
No, not, no.
What? I don't know...
In the $1 billion bonding?
No.
I don't know details, but I know bits and pieces that there have been some unexpended funds that like Manchester had even for that, that then DOT undertook the project, so they swept funds that were no longer needed or no longer to be used.
From what I read in the JI, it looked like that second section was gone.
Yeah, I saw that.
No.
And that dollar bond that they had cut.
That's why I mentioned it, that they...
Not as far as we know.
And as far as they told us, this was a week ago.
That's more recent than the article was, so.
Yeah. But they would've, I'm assuming they would've notified us, that's pretty significant.
Yeah, just, you know, when I saw that, I said, oh, that's a moot issue now, because it's not going any further than that.
But what happened in Manchester, there was two fund sources in there. That's why the leftover, part of, part of that trail in Manchester was actually stimulus money back from whenever that stimulus plan came out. So, and part of it was funds that Governor Rel had set aside from Department of Transportation funds. So that's why you had, there were two different funds in there, so there had to be leftover funds that they swept out, and that's gotta be it, so.
Did they bring any kind of a sketch to the meeting with you, with them? Were you looking at any kind of a sketch at all?
You were looking at it on a whiteboard.
We had a whiteboard up there where they, you know, that's why we were playing around, they kept switching whiteboards for us, so we could get a sense of where we're doing. So, they will get, once they get a, an okay, just one owner representative was there, he's gonna talk us on, once they get the okay from him, they're gonna send us a map, so we can have something to look at.
What they're looking at as the developers of the property is, is it feasible to get utilities in along that side or not? Because that makes a huge difference to them, so that's...
And that's, their survey guys will have to determine that, as opposed to coming through the road. So, it was a discussion with not a lot of conclusion, but the fact that they seemed anxious to, for once, to come to a conclusion, because they're, it appears that they're getting ready to really move forward on the bike trail, so it's imperative that this part get resolved, so.
Yes, and just this week, actually, Marissa called me to, about as-bilts for the sewer project.
Yeah, so they know where the stops are.
Moving along.
So they're moving, which is neat. More was accomplished in one week than had been done in almost six months.
Wow.
So, no, I, normally I'm being sarcastic, but this time I'm just saying it's a positive.
Makes you wonder if a stonewaller internally at DOT is no longer present.
Could be. You just, well, that's, no, I hadn't thought of that. But that's, so that's where we are. And I, it basically is pretty good news, I think.
I thought that was, from what I read, I thought that was ahead.
Yeah, no, it, I didn't see that article, but what they, I did know, you know, initially that the yellow project had two funding sources.
That's good.
And that's why you had that.
And Mike, that, the figure that was quoted in that JI article was 500,000, which is really only a very small piece of what the construction cost is gonna be.
Yeah.
So I don't, so I don't know what that was referring to.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, when they said the price, it seemed awful cheap for how far they were going, but I was just, I was saying, oh, shoot, you know, that eliminates one problem, because we don't have to deal with the connection if it's not gonna get to there, but it's nice to have that done. You know, I was looking forward to having that finished.
Well, that was, yeah, I mean, the key, I think the reason why it's still there is the fact that it connects to a major, and that's what's saving it.
And how is BSC doing on its survey of the other section?
They're hoping to be done in the next couple of months with putting everything together.
Have they been out in the field?
They have been out in the field, yes, yes.
Get an occasional call.
How are they gonna present that, Joyce?
They'll map it for us.
They're gonna map it.
Right. And that's why we let the residents know that we would make the maps available, so that people who have a question on where their boundary line is along the state, this really, at no expense to them, will help clarify that. Anybody else, any other comments or questions? So, this, we probably will have for our next regular meeting, I think, some significant updates, we're hoping. Lower Bolton Lake status?
You have in your packet...
Two things.
Two items, one from DEEP, basically that they had met with us, and as we had reported, they will not stock the lake this year, but contrary, they believe that the channel catfish are not an issue. Then you also see a letter from Vernon People asking about the annual drawdown, which the Board of Selectmen many years ago passed a resolution that you would continue to ask for a drawdown until you took further action. So that letter had already been sent to the state requesting the drawdown of the lake.
The annual drawdown, so we're ahead on that.
However, over the weekend, there was some weeds that were noticed, pictures taken, sent to George. He confirmed that it's curly pond weed, which is not good news.
No.
He confirmed that today, so now certainly be looking at what we're going to do to address that. The water clarity is actually a little bit better, but with that good news comes the bad news of the curly pond weed.
So curly pine?
Curly pond.
Yeah, more likely get brought in by either a waterfall or boater, but, so this, you know, that will have to be taken care of relatively quick.
It probably depends on the magnitude of it, as to whether, how they're going to address it.
Whether they can hand remove it, if it's local.
Or if it requires treatment.
If not, they'll go along and they'll use that. One of the two elements that they use, one of them is a material that blocks the photosynthesis, which just dies off. And there's a newer one, too, that doesn't impact the, if you will, the good algae growing on there, so, I don't know, we don't know yet. I mean, he just, he just literally confirmed it today, they sent the pictures out Monday, I think, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, today.
They just came to that this morning.
This morning, yeah.
Who founded a Friends of Bolton Lake member?
Yes, and basically, it might have been Kim herself, she didn't actually say, but she had the photos that she had sent to George for confirmation, and Kim couldn't be here tonight, so.
Yeah, they have a system set up that...
Yeah, they got a great...
Yeah, any, anything that's suspect, it's, you know, captured, that you bring it up to here for us, again, to George, or forward it and get it to him. And so, which really brought a quick response back.
Yes.
Joyce, just going back to this letter from the Friends of Bolton Lake, did we get back to them and tell them we'd already requested the drawdown?
We send them a copy of the request.
Oh, okay. So, as long as, as long as they've heard that from us, thank you.
If there's no other question, comments, or go on to item C, which is the budget report. Getting down the end.
As you can see, we are 79.29% expensed compared to 80.02% last year at the same time. On the first, I think it was, or the second, we did receive the bill for the resident troopers of about 273,000, so this number will go up quite quickly as to what's expensed. It just wasn't included in this, because this is through the end of May.
Did they raise the percentage rate of the troopers up?
They did not.
No?
No. But I can answer any questions that you might have?
None, we'll go on to item D, which is 17 budget.
17 budget, you have the legislative alert that came out on Friday, that basically the governor is making 20 million in municipal aid cuts for next fiscal year, but there is no information as to what any town is going to suffer, or where the cuts are going to fall, under what grants. There's discussion that it may not occur until after the November elections, which could be, the budget, the state budget is still in very bad shape, even going into next year, the savings that he thought he could even get this year with layoffs, he's not been able to obtain any of that. So, there's deep concerns that this is just the tip of what we're gonna see next year. And we'll make Board of Finance aware of this at the meeting prior, or following the budget tonight.
One of the, one of the things to anticipate, quite frankly, to anticipate, which happens before, is that you really get major hits in January. That's when they'll do all their adjustment and reduce this, that, and the other. But until then, as Joyce said, there's not even a hint of, I don't, quite frankly, I don't think they, they knew where they were gonna go. That was just a last-minute bit of a move after the legislative session refused to pass that proposal on posting bonds on smaller criminals. Stay tuned. That's the best we can say. On E, consider an act on budget transfers, Joyce, you wanna?
There is a list of transfers that have occurred that I provided, and I also have one request in the professional and technical services budget, which is 9,000 from the official administrative line item to the technical services, and then 15,000 from the refuse contract pickup to the professional and technical services, tech services. We had transferred 20,000 before for the employment separation fund, but had talked about trying to put away 30,000, so this is 10,000 more to be able to do that. And we've had lots of additional engineering costs this year, as we've done some surveys, especially tied to the community septic, and the Linwood project required a tremendous amount of engineering services as they went through with that whole reconstruction.
Yeah, that was all the drain reconstructions and road.
So we need a motion for...
So we were, so we were quite over, quite overestimated then, the amount needed in our refuse? Or how much, actually, what's the breakdown of the 15,000 between the refuse, oh, wait a minute, I'm not reading this correctly.
Right, it's 15 from refuse.
From, okay, so...
That's a total amount from refuse, too, professional.
So we were quite over then in our, in the estimate for what we needed for that contract?
Yes, we did not have as many new houses, and our, quite a bit of it was gasoline.
Fuel.
That's...
Huge, no, it is. No, it was a big reduction in fuel.
But it's gasoline, we pay so much over, if it, we have a base price set in, and we either get a credit if it drops below that, or we pay over. The prior year, we paid 15,000 in addition just for gas.
Or diesel, whatever, for fuel.
Yes, fuel surcharge. And this year, we have not had to pay that much. For next year's budget, we had already taken some of that adjustment into account. If you remember, that particular line item only went up $2,000.
I'll move that we transfer 9,000 from office administrative to technical services, and 15,000 from refuse to professional and technical services.
Second. Any addition, any additional comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carries. Subcommittee reports.
You had so many meetings.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, but they're in there.
There wasn't any.
No.
Already accounted.
Properties and facilities, we had a nice meeting at the barn, that was, that was a, one of our meetings was held there. I just wanted to comment on that, which gave everyone a good opportunity to go through, see where we are, and see how well things have progressed, and I guess take an update. If you have any updates?
Sandy, can you? It's been quiet.
It has been quiet. I sent an email today to the contractor to ask him if he knew approximately when he was coming back, and I have not heard back, but I'm hoping they're back on site within the next couple of weeks and working again. And you have in your packet tonight two invoices for the architects. One is a billing from April 13th, 2016, that somehow got lost in email transmission to Joyce and I. Neither one of us received it. It's for $3,110 for professional services for both the architect and the structural engineers. And then the second bill is dated May 25th, 2016, for $456.33. And our agreement with them for the fire restoration and supervision of construction work is a not-to-exceed for the architect of 10,000, excuse me, and a not-to-exceed for the engineer of 6,000. So total billings to date with the May 25th invoice come to 14,763. So I'd like to move that we approve both invoices, the invoice dated April 13th and the invoice dated May 25th, or payment.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Make some motion, made in second. Any comments, hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
In addition to that, just an update on the lead certification. I reported at the last meeting that the architect was hoping to finalize all that and to send it to the state. They did do that mid-May. Now, well, it's the Green Building Commission, the GLC. They normally take four to six weeks to respond. As of yesterday, we don't have any response yet.
Any other questions, if not? All right. On the Board of, on my report, Board of Educational Capital Projects, what they're, obviously, they're going forward with the, with the sidewalk, and they're gonna hold off the pavement until next year. The sidewalks and some additional area to sidewalks and the additional works on the steps and additional reinforcement that was never factored in original cost, actually brought the, the cost up about a hundred thousand over the original estimate. So, the projects have to be split up. So, they, it makes sense to do the, the, the concrete this year. I think it's been, PL's been?
Oh, yes, the concrete, the, the, Friday is the last day of school and graduation, so the, he is going to move in equipment probably this weekend. He might actually even start some work this weekend. If not, he'll be here Monday to start work.
So, they obviously have to be done prior.
Here, meaning?
Here, here at the center school.
Home center school, yes, thank you.
Sorry, at the center school. And that would allow next year, we'll have, they'll have to come back and re, and re-estimate the cost and do the rest of the, do the pavement portion. They're also working on, did they postpone the carpeting?
The carpeting, they put out to bid to do the portions that did not require the asbestos removal. That bid was either due back tomorrow or Thursday. I cannot, I'm sorry, I cannot remember if it's the eighth or the ninth the bids are due. Their concern is whether or not any contractor can get the work done in time for them to be able to shift the furniture around and to get down two coats or three coats of wax before school starts again. Part of the concern is that one of the areas is the second floor, and there's no place to put everything up there easily, because if you just shift it to another room, you have to shift it back before you can do that section and just, it, it's a concern that they're trying to figure out what they're gonna do with it. And otherwise, you're bringing it all down to the first level, like to the gym or something, which is not easy either. Those funds are available July first. They have a letter in their bid document ensuring bidders that the funds were approved at town meeting, but they were approved as of next fiscal year. There is ten thousand dollars currently that was in the capital budget that somebody could certainly start work with current, you know, as soon as possible, but the bid is just being opened this week. So, have to stay tuned.
Yeah, so we're not sure just where that is right now. Under the natural gas, obviously, you're all at, at the meeting, it's well-attended, very well-attended, very, I think there are a lot of good comments, a lot of good questions. I appreciated the folks from, I still consider CMG to come out and present their program and, and bring one of their, their technical persons, a person along, answer some of the questions. We are in the process now of still trying to get, get our, our costs together for that. And then we, oh, that.
Are we going to ask for a, ask the Energy Committee to look into this issue and give us a recommendation? I, I think we, I think we should.
Yeah.
They're meeting this evening.
Yep.
In another room, actually. Obviously, members of that committee were there, and I'm quite sure that this will be a topic of conversation.
I mean, the chair was there, and he said, here's what we're doing, here's what we're looking to do, and here's why we're doing it. And he says, well, if we have some concerns, if you have some concerns, discuss it and bring it forward to us.
Yeah. Well, I would actually like it more in a, in a form of a, I mean, I would like them to come before us whether they have concerns or not, and I'd really like to just hear, hear their thoughts on it, because I, I'm sure that they have a different perspective on the project, and, and I'm sure I could learn something from them. So, I, so I hope that we will actually reach out to them and say, please do come to us.
Yeah, I mean, the appropriate time would be our next meeting when we all have our data together and we can, right, right now, we're both, we're, we're both in a position, we've got some, we don't have everything to, to, we just have a, a bit more intelligent discussion on it. Yeah, but that's, that, we'll make sure that they are, they'll be here on our next meeting.
And three members of that group were actually at the meeting, so that was very well-attended by them. The PowerPoint from that presentation is up on the website as well.
And I recruited a member for them, moving from Coventry to Bolton, and he's on the, he's on the Energy Committee in Coventry.
Timing for this, Medicaid and natural gas would, would like a decision from the town as soon as feasible, so that they can move forward and fit it in with their other projects. They would not, they understand our situation with, we've already bought our heating tool for next year, and just the ability to do the conversion. They're very willing to wait until summer of next year for us to try to do any conversion, conversion by December of, a year from now. So, they're, they're trying to work with us as well.
But quite frankly, they're, they're looking for a decision within about sixty days, which would mean August. And that certainly gives us enough time to gather our information.
Yes.
Energy Commission to give us their data, at least a month ahead of time before we make our decision. And then, as I indicated at the meeting, once we get this information, we'll hold another public hearing prior to our, our final decision. Now, anybody have any other questions or comments on that? I did, I did wanna just make a, a brief comment and thank the Fire Department for hosting the Memorial Day service. I think they, they laid out very well, went very well, and, and they did a head count. There were, they counted three hundred people there. So, that's a, on a rainy day, that was a very good turnout.
So, on, on natural gas, are we going to talk about the, the petition that's in the packet?
Yep, okay. That's, might as well bring it up right now. So, in, in there.
This was just dropped off late yesterday, actually, towards the end of the day of a petition. This actually has to do with Andovers, not with Bolton.
This is Andovers, this is in reference to the, the terminal that is being proposed in a town of Andover on Route Six. As you may recall, what they're looking to do is, actually, truck, instead of pipeline gas, to the, actually, truck it, averaging, well, this says five to eight, with it, they were saying, well, it, it, yeah, it would be eight trucks, four in, four out, for twenty-four hours, seven days a week, to, to support pumping gas into a pipeline. And their, 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 their market, I guess, for this is, is, is going east. We had asked the, the folks from CMG how that, how that impacts anything that's going on in our sector, and they said that their, their, their projections as far as gas availability is based on what's, what's currently being provided and has absolutely nothing to do with this, with this project. This, this project is really, what's it about? It's about a, a, a company that transports natural gas, wanting to find a spot to tie in and, and discharge it. So, they're, that's, that's the essence of what they're doing. And it, and it's, it's playing operation. Town of Andover is going, going through some hearings on it. And these are, I mean, the residents that are here that basically said, no, thank you. It impacts, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, they're, they're making a specific request of our board to.
Oppose.
To, no, no, they're asking us to request a, to request the DOT to make a safety study of the effect of increased truck traffic on Route Six because of the operation of an infusion station in Andover. So, I believe we have to address that.
Well, that's a, that's a easy enough request to do, and, and, quite frankly, because I think we should reach out to Coventry, see if they're, if they wanna, since it impacts Coventry as well. Part of Route Six goes through Coventry. If we're gonna do this, we should do it in conjunction with, with Coventry as well. I'm not sure if Andover is willing to do that, but I think we should reach out to, for all three towns. If all three towns ask, I think we'd have more.
I would think that this is gonna be a very easy thing for the DOT. They have studied that road for.
Oh, yeah.
Since the day I moved into this town, so they have got to have.
Before that.
Right. Look, we have the data, but, but.
They've gotta have all the information necessary sitting on a desk.
Right, but I think it has more impetus if all three of, at least two of us, if not all three of the towns, say, hey.
I would, I would be surprised, well, Andover will probably get the same request from their residents that are opposed to it.
Right.
As these residents, I'm sure, come from the opposition side, basically, because they live along the pathway.
But the DOT is, is neutral.
Yeah.
So, that's the point. That's why I just, I think this study works, works for, whatever side of the aisle you are on this one, that's, that's, it's an important thing, because that was one of the questions that was asked when this was presented to the Chamber of Commerce about a month ago, same thing, what's, you know, what's DOT's position on that? And, and they were told, you should anticipate a request for a study to, to occur. These were the, the two representatives from, from that trucking company that were there.
I, I'd like to move that we request to our state legislators with a letter to the DOT commissioner, request, requesting a traffic study as noted in this petition, and further that we send copies to Andover and Coventry and ask them to join us in the, in the request.
Good, thank you.
Second.
Motion made, second. Aye, no one, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay?
Just, just as a point of interest.
Yes.
From somebody who comes from the field of these things blowing up and stuff like that. I have never, in all my years here, dealt with a vehicle or had, we haven't had a problem in the state of Connecticut, to my knowledge, where one of these has bleve, which is what they're talking about, where you get a critical tear.
Right.
Due to heat in the vapors portion of one of these tanks, because they're pressurized cylinders, not like a little gasoline tanker, which gets its fire and melts down and just leaks. These have a significant event when they, when they go, when they've left. I've never heard, we've never had one, to my knowledge, at least in my years of experience in the fire service in this area. It's an extremely safe vehicle. When you compare it to the other vehicles that are on the road where you have the placards, you see the placards on there that have, supposed to give you the information, but quantities of chemicals and things that don't meet the threshold. For example, under five thousand pounds of TNT may not be labeled in a vehicle that's going back and forth on these roads, or radioactive material. It's, you find that in UPS vehicles as it's being transported around. I, I feel far safer seeing one of these in front of me on the highway than I do seeing a UPS truck, to be perfectly honest with you, because of what tend to be in these types of vehicles and, and ordinary box delivery trucks that are labeled combined cargo. Well, the combined cargo could be radioactive material and TNT in the same box. So, there's, it doesn't give me a warm fuzzy to see a trailer truck with a box on it in front of me as opposed to one of these. I'm perfectly honest, I'd rather follow one of these on the highway than an ordinary box truck.
Mike, is there a professional firefighters' organization, Fire Marshals Association, that may have data statewide or New England-wide on these vehicles?
I don't know if they'd actually have it, or statistics on their, their accidents. You don't hear of problems with these very often. And when you do, it usually makes the national news as opposed to local and state types of things. So, thinking back over the past thirty years or forty years that I've been involved in the fire service, I don't remember a problem where one of these, a leak, yes, they occasionally get a leak, and sometimes the best thing to do is let it leak. But as far as a bleve, this catastrophic failure around the country, yeah, they have been, mostly on trains, but very rarely in a, in a truck like this. And like I said, I'm more afraid of the, the truck that's sitting in front of me that I don't know what's inside the box. I used to think that as I rolled up in, you know, in the car, you know, what's inside this box, you have no idea. At least this, you know what you're dealing with, and you know how to approach it and how to deal with it. But, no, I, the fire marshal may be able to give you some data on it, but I don't, I don't think so. They do truck inspections, they do the oil truck inspection, gas truck inspections every year, so they may have some data on that, but as far as actual instances of this,
We can, we can give Ray a jingle, see, be curious.
I, I would be curious, because I hear these stories, and then, my husband was a professional truck driver for many years, and he pretty much said what you said, that he would rather drive one of these than a gasoline tanker.
Any day.
And.
No question.
I don't know enough at this point to make an intelligent decision.
You know, you see the, you see the small tankers going around, the, the ones that are about half the size of a gasoline tanker, with the ribs on them and the black coating in the middle, that's, that's corrosive, that's acids of all different types, you know, that are just as big a problem if they get out of their containers.
Yeah.
You know, there's all kinds of things running around out there, and the ones that worry me the most are the ones that are not required to be placarded because it's below a certain threshold of poundage and things like that. Those are the ones that God only knows what could happen when you have an incident.
I think, part of the concern is really, would the increased traffic level. Impact more than anything else.
Yeah, that would be my concern.
And then that was, most of our, our concerns are more related to the traffic flow than, than the, yeah, than explosive component.
On the other hand, a seven-eleven down the street might increase the traffic.
A Dunkin' Donuts.
That Dunkin' Donuts is gonna make a fortune. But, and I, I, if I may, I want to just jump back a second, and I forgot, I forgot to mention it, on the properties, is that we've had, both Lance and John, working with the schools to see, to come up with a short-term and long-term solution with the tennis courts, you know, with the fencing and that issue. We've actually have contacted some contractors, waiting to get some data back. It, I don't, you know, there's no way we're gonna be able to rebuild those, this malls, and we're not even funded, but we have to, we have to secure the fencing to keep those, those courts usable, so that's what they're looking at right now, a short-term, that'll carry us through next year till we can come up with a, and fund a, a plan to permanently correct that. And I'm sorry I didn't mention that, I, I noted it and I forgot to.
Could we apply for a steep grant again, even though we got denied once? Are we able to put in a, reapply?
We, we could, but those don't come up until even January, so it wouldn't come around.
Only six months.
Those are in the paper as well, the elimination of those.
Yeah, yeah, they're, the chances, yeah, that's a.
They're cutting funding, it's hard to say if there will be funding.
This, this one, this is one we're kinda, kinda look at what, what would be to, to actually replace what exists there, up, you know, up, up. Obviously, we have to deal with the fencing, there's an issue with the fencing. There is some, if you've been there, the surface is, it's got a. There is some... If you've been there, the surface is... It's got a couple of issues, but we're looking to see what we can do to keep the courts playable for a year and make the fencing secure and safe for a year, so we can upgrade it.
The only way to make the courts permanent is to raise the water... Or lower the water table or raise the courts above 30.
Well, you know, there's some, there's new technology that's actually based on earthquake technology that some schools have been using, that really seems to make them last a little longer.
Yeah, well, the unit floats.
Yeah, because that's our problem here, is the freezing and thawing in the water.
So what would we, what will we do in one year? I mean, if we get, if we get short-term measures that get through one year, what's going to happen in one year?
Well, in the meantime, we have, we have to do a permanent correction, either rebuild the courts and put new fencing on, and fund it.
So in a year, we would be doing what?
What we have to do between now and next year, prior to the end of school, if we're going to, for a permanent solution, come up with what's it going to cost and what's it going to take, and actually request the funds, have the funds in place to do it.
Yeah, we can apply for a grant.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't look like...
No, but I...
A grant is the best way to get it.
Our best, safest approach is to actually go for, go for whatever cost is for us to actually approve, approve the funds in a borrow, in part of a borrowing package.
Are we... Is the, is the whole field renovation package still? We never really got to...
No, we're going to...
We never really tied that up.
There's a lot, there's a lot of expensive issues we're going to have to talk about.
So would we include it in that?
It has to be.
Right, okay.
Has to be. Again, again, because of priority, you know, which one... This one, quite frankly, it went from an okay priority to it's kind of moved up on the list, I think. I don't know anybody else, but I think because of its condition and so use, it's moved up pretty high on the priority list, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I guess, so are you saying that, I mean, this was originally tied in with the whole ball field renovation?
No.
So we would not tie it to the ball field renovation? We would look to doing this work separately?
Each one separately, because we may not have the funds to do... If we don't have the funds to do the million and a half dollar project, we certainly would have the funds to do, I mean, at a much, much lesser expense, the courts. The courts aren't an absolute immediate report.
Well, we had, we originally had some estimates about, I'm going to say, less than a year ago.
But that was for...
Change in courts and...
And that was to add, that was to add.
Add courts.
Right.
That was just over 500,000.
That was a half a million. What we're looking now is to get a cost of replacing what we currently have.
Replacing just what we have, the athletic director got a quote, and it was $460,000, $470,000, because he was changing the lighting and everything.
That seems crazy, that 470,000 to replace what we've got versus bills.
Yes.
That's why we're...
Three additional courts, or two additional courts.
That's why we're looking at it ourselves, to the contractors, to see just where we come up with numbers.
I think it was embarrassing to the town that our girls tennis team made the state finals and couldn't play on their home court because it was in so bad condition. They had to go to an outside court.
I think one of the, one of the issues really plays down to, back to our shared services issue, because what tends to happen is, is the schools, when things are working well, and it's the towns when things go wrong. So, but this is one of these things that I think we need to work out also with, with the Board of Education on proper maintenance of the courts, and who's going to do it. Anyway, so there's, there's a lot involved in this, other than just, you know, replacing the courts, yes, but we owe it to the town to come up with a plan to maintain that court so it doesn't deteriorate. That's part of what we're...
And we need, if we're going to replace it, we need to replace it in a way that it's going to weather the storm, the freezing.
Right, yeah. I think as Gwen suggested, you know, that, that new, basically, they basically make a floating court.
Farmington High School did it, so that's a resource that we could use.
Yeah.
We could talk to them. And it's, it's more expensive upfront, but it lasts longer, so you don't, you have less replacement cost.
Sorry to bring that up before, but I didn't want it to go by without us discussing it.
In the interest of time, I will try to be very brief, because I know we need to get back over to town.
I have five minutes.
Oh, we're good.
Expressway Properties, as you are aware, we signed the documents, and it was sent to the state. We don't have the deed as of yet sent back to us for filing, but I would assume that that will be here shortly. And then the next step for the selectmen will be to look at those particular parcels, probably in a special meeting, to really discuss what you want to do.
Wait, are you talking about just the ones on Notch Road?
Correct, correct.
Yes, just Notch Road.
Correct. We do not have any information on the other ones as of yet, but now that the Notch Road section is gone, I think they'll concentrate on moving that out within the next month or two for the other sections to the three towns. Eastern Gateway Study, I hope some of yous attended Family Day, and they had a booth as part of it. They were very, very pleased with the attendance and interactivity, that they actually had 75 residents participate, which they were very pleased with. The next event they'll be at is the Coventry Fest, which is over the 4th.
We had a chance to put our stickers on various categories of things we'd like to see in the corridor and things we didn't like to see. And you're given an X amount of these little dots, and you could, you could spend them any way you wanted. So if you had a, if something that really was big on your heart, you could just load that one up while moving around. So it's a... We've seen that, that type of thing used several times. Pretty effective in getting a message across. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but...
No, that's quite all right. Building Foundation, I gave you just talking points, information and resources from the state. We are trying to push this more at the local level. I'm working with CROG quite heavily on two fronts. We're trying to get it so that the towns consider the issue jointly, that we take the same basic approach, both to what's required, what the town will do, what the town will not do, and what, how things are handled. The basic part of this is it's cracking foundations, and there's horror stories galore out there as to what's going on. As you'll see, as a law, as of October, they can come back and ask for a reduction in their grant list. They technically could come in now if they wanted to. Do we have these in Bolton? Yes, we do. We know of one subdivision, and there's probably some other scattered ones. We've put some information out on the, through the e-Bulletin already, and we're trying to put up more and more information. Actually, the July 5th show, my show, Jim's going to be on, and this is all we're going to talk about, is the, it's Alexis.
Right off of Brandy Street. It's a very short, a short, not all, but most of the homes did have concrete from that...
And what happens is, it's like the concrete develops like a spider web, just cracks out. And there's, you know, unfortunately, stories about people being taken. You know, I can correct that for you for 20,000, and you never see them again. The insurance companies are trying to back out of it completely, but on the other side, if you try to get insurance on a home, they're making you go through inspections, and it takes months. So it's just, we're lucky that we're not impacted near as much as many of the other communities around us. But what we're trying to do is even look at, through CROG, the Purchasing Council, we're trying to look at, can we do some cooperative bidding that we can extend to residents for the testing, you know, list a bunch of people, and we already have cost estimates for the engineering. Some towns are charging building fees, some are not. Some are paying for the cost of testing for the residents, some are not. So we're trying to get some consistency from town to town, if we possibly can. And then a lot will fall back on the assessors in the end, too. And if you have residents, you know, Jim and I will try to help people, but it is a problem. You have Willington, it's probably half their housing stock.
This motion is in the backcourt.
Same thing in Stafford.
Yeah, yeah. Stafford is huge.
It's, it is, it's just...
We're lucky we're serviced mostly by Insolde and builders.
Well, builders, yeah.
But Vernon has, Vernon has issues. Manchester has issues. I mean, it's just, it's everywhere, unfortunately. So we've identified the potential of probably 15 to 20. Don't know. One thing that we have not looked at is, is there any commercial, or when, where our schools done? Where did any of that come from? Did we have any projects? So that's kind of the next step for us as well.
I don't think so, because when they did this project, the guy that had the contract on that had his own facility out in Wyndham.
That was Joe Nason.
Yeah, he pulled all his stuff out of Wyndham.
Yeah, he's the owner of builders.
Yeah, so we didn't have an issue with that. But like the town of Stafford has condo complexes, even Vernon, one of their complexes with that. And the problem with this, the severity varies dramatically. You can punch a hole into the concrete to, you know, a few, a few minor cracks. And the solution, unfortunately, is replacement.
Yeah, all foundations crack.
Right.
You get expansion, contraction, concrete cracks. It's the ones that go tied together and it needs to crumble, then...
Right.
Yes.
Then you got a whole different problem.
And I do know of some now, that as they've began the foundation work, they have discovered the footings are gone as well.
Oh, yeah, same material.
So it...
It's an expensive proposition.
Yes. A straightforward house isn't bad, but the more landscaping that you have close by, or you have, you know, a deck off of it, or a sunroom, that's when it starts to become more and more expensive, because all that has to be removed in order to do the work.
The cheapest quote I've seen is 100,000. That's the cheapest quote, running up anywhere to 300,000 to 350,000. It's, I mean, it's a huge economic impact.
And it will impact the grant list going forward for all these towns. Right now, the state has not stepped up to providing funding. They're doing a study. We're also trying to push something else, because most of these people, they've, their house is paid for, and the last thing they want to undertake is another 100, 200, 300, thousand-dollar even loan to try to repair it. There are some that are just going to short sale, people are just, they're selling a 350,000 dollar house for 100,000 and walking out. So it will have economic impact in our section of the state, without question, especially during this time period. Taland is the town that had massive expansion and building going on. This is, there's a copy, just for you to look through, a cost end of session that just talks about some of the different bills that were passed. The municipal aid does not include the 20 million that the governor just took, but there are some of these things that will impact us, some that don't. The car tax cap, which was at 32, he raised it to 37 as part of the budget. The municipal parking lots, if you remember, we changed last year what we called Indian Notch Park because of that. Now they corrected that, so it doesn't fall under that. So there's several things in here that impact us, but I just wanted to share the information. The fire department will need to carry the reversal drugs now for the opioids. The public safety, it's got the concrete foundation issue in it, so there's just various things. And certainly, if you have any questions, let me know.
And since the hour is getting close to eight, I want to entertain a motion to, we can adjourn to the town hall and reconvene after the results, in case we have, so we can wrap up our meeting there.
Okay, we need to set another meeting anyway.
Right, we can do, right. Yeah, so we can do that when we're there.
Are we going to, will we convene whether or not the budget passes?
Yeah.
You have appointments that you need to do.
Yeah.
So...
So we need to motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second. To the town hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.